...America and to the republic for which it stands, foundation under God, in this world of liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business, we will, we normally have a public comment as a first order of business, however, tonight, we have, the board met as a committee to hold on the 11th, last Thursday, to select an individual to fill the position held by Dr. Musilovich. I'm happy to say that we have opted, decided to invite Dr. Tamura to take that place. He has accepted, and as of this moment, I would like Mr. Stott to...
We have a vote for him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just...
I'm sorry. I, I would like to move that we, I move that we accept Dr. Timothy J. Tamura to fill the vacant space of Dr. Musilovich's.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Stott.
Check him over. Okay, repeat it for me, please. Aye, Dr. Timothy J. Tamura.
Aye, Dr. Timothy J. Tamura.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Duties of my office with fidelity.
You got a single hand.
I won't charge this whole district for the note.
Voting meeting for the exhortance of school board, we would like to recognize some teachers who have attained tenure. Tenure is not what many people think, it does give you some security, however, tenure indicates that these teachers have excelled and have met our criteria to continue to work. So I would like to, we have Christopher Gillum is not, is not attending, however, Virginia Gonzalez, I can stand, please. Emily Holloman. Carol Begley. Jason Zelna. I congratulate and commend you all. Congratulations. Now, is there any of the public who would like to speak before?
One side of the sheet.
One side of the sheet. That said, we'll continue on. We have two sets of minutes for August 13th and 20th. I will entertain the motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
A motion is second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are accepted. Treasurer's report is attached as item 4A.
I need that we accept the treasurer's report as shown in IV4A, IV4A.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the treasurer's report?
Just one question, I see that we got a lot of the school tax money. Is that on par with what we normally get?
Actually Charlie Diamond, Exeter Text Collector studied today, and as of the end of August, he's at about eighty-seven percent, which is a little higher than last year.
But it's pretty consistent, though. It's a mark where it is very serious.
We also have a policy 916 as attachment 5A. It's the first reading. Does anyone have any comments on that revision of policy?
If I remember correctly, I think we're asking for all individuals to seek to be a volunteer to have approved clearances, and that they pay for the clearances. I don't necessarily agree with the individual wants to give freely their time to have the paper products, whether for a short term or a long term.
I, I also agree with that statement. I voiced my opposition for that at the workshop being, which I think is more likely to pretend as great. But I do think whether someone offers ten hours every time or a hundred hours every time, if they have to pay, is it ten dollars if they would have to pay?
It's just the one clearance.
It's only one, yeah.
It's only one clearance. I, I think that as a board, that's the least we can do. After all, they have to come here with their, you know, with their own transportation and then back to their own home, spend their time. I mean, it's, it's a very small pittance to pay, in my opinion, and I would hope that we could, you know, get that out of the...
Do we have any idea what the dollar figure would be?
It's ten dollars.
No, no, I...
So, question is how many?
Do we have any idea?
We're talking a thousand dollars, we're talking ten thousand dollars, we're talking five hundred.
We're not talking ten thousand.
We're talking more than a thousand.
It might be.
How often do the clearances catch one for volunteer?
We could just do it one time.
Well, it doesn't work like with teachers or other employees, if they don't continue the next year, then they come back a year later, but how do you do it all over again?
But I think we could say to them, you know, you know, maybe they would have to take a year off because, you know, of some kind of financial reason or for a personal reason, and we could say to them, well, could you just come in for two hours or something, go into school here, so that we, we didn't have to pay, you know, your ten dollars clearance again? I mean, I think we could, we could do something like that.
No, I, I think we should have a policy that, I mean, if someone wants to volunteer their time, they're getting freely, basically, look at what the cost of minimum wage is, basically, you're getting, because they're here for one hour, and they're basically paid for their services and they're paid for their clearance. I think it's getting pretty pathetic if we're asking for someone to give more than they can serve freely.
So are we wanting to agree with them that we'll change it until we...
I, I agree, I agree with getting the clearances, I think it's important.
Oh, yes, definitely, definitely.
I think it's important that we do that. I just think the cost is gonna be, I think it's minimal, typically, it's apparent helping out, that I think we should show, or I don't think it's gonna be a big number, but...
Well, that was, that was the feeling of the board when this policy was written, that we should pay for it, because we were reading the benefits.
We'll make the changes for next month.
Do we need to have a motion on that, or is it...
No.
No, we're gonna just bring it back for a second reading, next month. Yeah.
Mr. Stott, business functions.
I move that the board of school directors award the industrial arts bid to the lowest responsible bidder. Award is made by individual item, that's an attachment 6A.
Second. I have a second. Motion is second. Discussion?
Mr. Stott, could you explain the difference between the lowest responsible bidder and the lowest bidder?
Well, in any bid, you have to meet the requirements of whatever is supposed to be bid, so if the person, as far as they may have bid, but they didn't meet all the requirements for the bid, so, that's, that's the way I, that's my understanding.
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of granting industrial arts bids, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approve property tax refunds totaling eleven thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty-four cents to property owners Donald W. and Mara Lundstrom for years 2007 through 2013, resulting from reductions granted for court order and stipulation in docket number 06-13162, and that's an attachment 6B.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of refund as printed, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approve a property tax refund for 2013 in the amount of four thousand dollars and eighteen cents to property owners Dennis T. and Daniel McHugh, resulting from an exemption granted by the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, that's an attachment 6C.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of granting the veterans exemption, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Any addendum, under letter D, I move that the board of school directors approve a sub-grant contract for implementation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Part B, between Berks County Intermediate Unit Number 14, grantee, and Exeter Township School District, the sub-grantee, or contractor, for a total amount of six hundred forty thousand three hundred nine dollars, for the project period July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2014. Furthermore, the board of school directors authorizes District Superintendent Dr. Beverly Martin to execute the agreement.
Second.
A motion is second. Can someone explain what this does?
It gives us money to help students with disabilities. It goes, it flows through the IU, and that is given to us.
It's federal funds, you use, we use the funds to pay for special education teachers and extended school year. In 1213, the amount was six hundred ninety-six thousand, it's called bounds, six hundred forty thousand. This is something we've been receiving for the past several years.
They have to be directly to us, and to the IU, and to each district, and we have to contract with them that that happens.
Is it determined by population numbers, or just what the federal government feels like? It's what the total allocation from the federal government, and then it is per rating of all.
And wasn't that reduced to the sequestration?
Yes, that was part of the budget.
Did we do a chief in the ICU?
No, it's not that they're doing it, the money just flows through them.
It flows through them.
Oh, so we get it?
Yes, we get it.
And we're not contracting with them to do any...
No, well, well, they do some stuff with us, but I mean...
Okay, as long as we're not giving it to them, that's fine.
No, we're getting it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion as printed, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Stott.
Director Bender?
I move that the board of school directors approve the retirement of Joanne Wilreich's effective September 26th, 2013.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of appointing Ms. Wilreich as the secretary, please indicate so by saying aye.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All in favor of approving the retirement, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dr. Weber, she, she retired, not resigned?
Yeah, she changed.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. I always thought you were retiring.
I move that the board of school directors accept the resignations in Part B of Amanda Myers and Ann Rockwoods.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor of approving the resignations, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approve or ratify the following appointments, number one, certificated staff, Jenna Comroll, and an amended item in Part B for Mary Husk.
Second.
A motion is second. Discussion?
Would this be first order date, now being September 16th, are we pro-rating her salary due?
Yes. Yeah, she only gets paid for the day she works.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the certificated staff appointments, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item is substitute teachers, I'm gonna divide this into two motions. First, I move that the board of school directors approve the substitute teacher roster list of certified teachers for 2013, 2014.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion?
I have a question. I was looking over these, some of these teachers, we, we approved them last year also, do we approve every year?
Yes.
Oh, why is that?
Uh, because some come off the list, some don't wanna do it anymore, and this is to keep current.
Oh, 'cause I thought, I mean, I, I substituted them, and once I was on the list, I was on the list, and so you're saying that someone, how do they know then to apply them?
We contact, we contact, and would you like to remain a substitute, or contact them at the end of each year?
So how many of these are repeated?
Um, I would say about a quarter, I mean, a quarter are new, and three-quarters might be. The IU does a new batch of guest teachers every, every year, not all of them apply to Exeter, so it's...
No, I was talking about the certificated staff.
Yeah, let, let me, I can check on that, that's an easy enough thing for me to check on, how, and I can email you that?
Oh, okay. Because I think it's kind of, at least, then we know, then we can see, you know, who are the certificated staff that are new to the district as compared to the old certificated staff, because I'd be interested in that information.
And they'll work different amounts of time, some may only suffer us a few times, because they're in a cell for all the other districts, or several other districts, you know, so I'll be glad to find out who are the repeaters.
And I think there's probably some people on, I, I know a few people on here that have been substituted for districts for long.
Yes, yes.
So, any further discussion?
Can you tell me about college perm?
College perm is an old, it's one of the certificates?
Yeah.
It's an older certificate.
I wrote it last, I write a college perm, and way, way back.
Yep, it's way back.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So I didn't know that.
Yeah, aren't those people then, they, they continued to college a little while?
No, it doesn't refer to college, I think it had to do with the institution that they, they went to, it's, it's not, it's, I think it's not issued anymore, or, I mean, way back, way back, I don't know.
Yeah, it's good for ninety-nine years.
Oh, oh, oh.
But...
My certificate's still for ninety-nine years.
Well, yeah, I know, they, they were all done almost the same time, but it's good for ninety-nine years, obviously, now it's not good for ninety-nine years, but you have to keep up, you have to do the Act 48 stuff.
Well, yeah, well, everyone had to do that, I'm sure, I did, yeah.
Right, wow.
I had to too.
That's not my certificate.
Let's see if I see the name.
Any further discussion?
I'm here.
We're dealing with approving the list of certified substitute teachers. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approve the substitute teacher roster of guest teachers for 2013, 14.
Second.
A motion is second. Discussion?
Well, I will be voting against this measure, as, because I do feel that there are many teachers out there who have graduated from teacher colleges with the four-year degrees, who can't find jobs, and guest teachers have their degrees, they're not in the certification of education, and I, I don't, I don't believe that anybody can teach, so I, I will, I will vote against these teachers, these, these guest teachers.
As an adjunct at the local community college, I will be voting in favor of this, because I know I can teach myself better than anybody you can find.
Have you noticed that there are several individuals on the list that have been substitute teachers for us for numerous years, and do a fantastic job, I will be voting for this list.
And I will, I will as well, now, we've had this conversation before, the only reason we have this list is because there are times when we exhaust the certificated group, where we do not physically have someone to be in the classroom, we need to have someone in the classroom, these are qualified people, they have gone through training, I believe at the IU, there's a certain class, they go through this, and we need to do this, to make sure that we have someone eligible to be in the classroom, they are not the first person called, the certificated folks are first, but we just, we need to make sure that we are covering ourselves for all contingencies.
And just as a point of information, even though it's early in the year, we've already had at least one day where we could not cover every classroom, even with the guest teachers being on the list.
Right, because what they stop now, there's a lot of, they're, people are getting on, and they're already locked into other places, so, again, I think we just need to be prepared.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I would hope that this conversation in no way communicates the fact that these folks have an important contribution to make here, and this board and this district is grateful for their service, and we would like them to continue, obviously.
Agreed.
All in favor of approving the non-certified substitute teachers, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors appoint the following support staff listed under letter number three, A through D on the addendum, oh, on the main agenda, and two people on the addendum.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approve the appointments of the extra regular staff, number four, health, school health services, number five.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approve or ratify the following requests for leave of absence, listed under Part D, number one, our certificated staff, A and D.
Motion is second. Discussion? All in favor of the leaves of absence, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approve or ratify the following requests for a change of status, listed under Part E, that's number one, support staff, A through I on the agenda, and number two, certificated staff on the addendum.
Second.
A motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dr. Bender, do we skip number five, the school health services?
Why?
So those were...
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
I move the board of school directors approve the following staff conferences listed under Part F, number one through twenty, on the main agenda, and number twenty-one on the agenda.
A motion is second. Discussion?
Um, all right, can you tell us which one of these are mandatory, just off the... Most of them, all of the ones that, that are for paraprofessionals in the special education area are mandatory in the sense that each of the paraprofessionals must have twenty hours of training per year, I feel, so I think that covers not all, but certainly a great deal of the names on the list.
Dr. Martin, is the state now reimbursing my student or faculty development fees yet?
No.
Or not, it's just still not?
No.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the conferences as presented, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That completes personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Bender. Any discussion? Student board?
Um, item A is the, the six mile radius, I was just wondering, because this happened on...
If we could have a motion first, I want to discuss.
Yeah, this is a report, this is within the sixty mile radius, so I was just, you know, telling you about, so our kids actually went there?
Which one are you referring to?
Number one, the environmental science students, the two that, prior to this statement coming, I remember the person, they were, August of 29.
Yeah.
I looked at that twice, and I said, who's the guy in here? Were they in school that day?
Yeah, they were, they were, that was the first week. Yeah, it does seem really early, but that was the first week.
So, is Longwood Gardens within the six mile radius?
Just barely, yes.
What are you...
Why did you make the difference?
Was there a lot of flowers this morning?
He was going to smell roses.
Similar to what you've heard there.
Just a lot of it's within the sixty mile radius, that's all I care about.
Looking for inspiration for swearing anything.
I move that the board of directors approve the agreement with Redding Area Community College to continue to offer dual enrollments to students, such as the conference, and the previous agreement, if you have a chance to live with that.
Second.
Oh.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of doing enrollment, but there are a couple items on here that trouble me. Number four, under the guidelines, says that all our textbooks and must be approved by RAC, are we okay with them second guessing what academic materials are?
Well, I mean, they, they have the right not to second guess our academic materials, but they have the right to say, we don't think your textbook measures up to our expectations, and we can't, we're not gonna give credit for the course, so I don't have a problem with that, it's kind of a quality control thing for them, I guess, and we're, we feel that we select the best textbooks to, for the course, so...
Yeah, I mean, I, I trust our professionals to do...
Yeah, yeah, I do, I do as well, but if they're giving credit, they need to...
Is RAC ever required, is that what we're doing?
Um, not of, not of me, very rarely.
I, I know that we get, we get approved for the initial course presentation, but then...
And when we change teachers or textbooks, we need to sort of go through a process there, but other than that, they don't.
So, Dr. Martin, you have any ideas to how many students take the dual enrollment?
Um, you know, I have to check current figures, I don't know currently, but typically, the number has been high, I'll say over a hundred, under two hundred, if you, if you talk about repeat courses, where one child takes more than one course, you know, the number of courses is higher than obviously the number of students in that case, it's, it's very popular.
And then, do they get credit at any state college?
They get credit at any state college, and some private colleges, you have to, you know, depends on the individual college, but any state college, yes.
I think that's a great opportunity for our students, to do dual enrollment.
Yes, it's a great opportunity for RAC, too, that's okay.
Well, that gets my, my second point that troubles me is that our Exeter families and students are paying full tuition for the RAC credits, and yet, Exeter's providing the teachers and the textbooks and facilities, so it seems to me something's economically not right, like, our students are paying the full.
Yeah, here's the deal on that, they used to...
They used to give us money.
Pay so much money for the teacher, and we would give it to the department to use for supplies for their department and so forth, and they stopped doing that several years ago, and as the trade-off, they told us, well, we won't charge the kids for the activities fee, or the, the extra fee, and I said, but they never used, you know, they never used the campus, they never, they didn't participate, so you never should have been charging them for that, in my mind, but, you know, why should we lose money because of that? But that was voted on by the board, and that's what, that's the provisions of the dual enrollment agreement. I went to the other superintendents at our meeting, and I said, are you, are you all okay with that? And they said, well, you know, we're gonna have to live with it, so that was kind of a general consensus, that that was what their board voted on, and that was the only conditions under which we could have to agree, do enrollment agreement with them, since so many of our kids wanted to do enrollment courses, you know, I sort of lived with it, but I'm not happy about that either, they were providing the instructor, the supplies, the classrooms, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, they're just getting money, the only thing they have The only thing they had to do was process the, uh, transcripts and so forth from the kids.
For three hundred dollars.
And I'm sure that, yeah, yeah, right, exactly. So it's all, it's all gravy for them, really.
I talked to a, uh, staff member who worked in this area at RAC, and there is, especially if we got the other superintendents behind us, there is an opportunity to negotiate a discipline.
Oh, really?
This could be needed.
I think we should pursue that, actually.
Yeah, I couldn't get anybody else excited about it, or figured, well, me alone, I'm not gonna do too much.
Well, you know, it, I, um, it's like with the, for your text center, we have a lot of students that are laying their, you know, but, I think that, well, they have some, you know, word down with teachers, I think that's about it.
That is, that's all.
Yeah.
So maybe it's time to say, come on, guys, you know, we're just catching it on all ends and we're all sitting at the bottom of our budget trying to save a few bucks, you know?
Well, it's coming, it's coming from the families, it's, you know...
I do have a set of families, but it's, and we should do it.
I didn't mind it as much when the, you know, we had the dual enrollment funding from the state, but when that dried up and the kids don't get any other break, and I figure at least this will get rid of the activity fee for them, which they never benefited from anyway, so...
But in fact, you can take another credit on group of college students.
Right.
And not pay what these colleges are.
It's a benefit.
I know, I, literally, my daughter, it enabled her to go one semester less.
Right.
And that's huge. Had twenty-four thousand dollars a semester.
Right. Because they take the AP course.
Take the test, you know, that's part of what she did, right?
And you grab the credit, so it's just, I think we should look at it.
I think we should look at that, because their enrollment standpoint, some people are having good, uh...
How about the board presidents? Do you get together a couple times a year?
Only I would practice.
Yeah, only the board president did.
I can, uh, do some policy.
All right, thanks. And Ben, you'll follow up with the...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did we vote on that yet?
Okay.
Should we move the table out and hold further discussion, or...
Well, I don't think...
Why don't we approve this contract?
The kids are already in the courses.
Let's ask.
All right, I do have a, a motion in a second, and we've had gracious plenty of discussion. Uh, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd say I move that the, uh, following field trip, which is down to sixty mile radius, be approved as the junior high school eighth grade music students, who have music parks at first park, May ninth, twenty-fourth.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
Are they going to perform there? You don't know?
Um, I don't know, but I could look in my trusty little folder and see if I can find it. I think they are. And this actually, uh, my secretary checked, and if you go in one, one route, it's less than sixty miles, and if you take another route, it's sixty miles. So I said, just put it on, because I don't know which way they're going. Yeah. Okay, so you want to know if they're performing?
Yeah.
To allow, uh, yes, they are. Uh, to perform for respected musicians and clinicians and bring back excitement to home ensemble. Okay.
What day is it?
It's a Friday. It's an early dismissal Friday.
Do they leave after dismissal?
Uh, let's see. Nope, they leave at six-thirty AM, so that's definitely not after dismissal. And they get back...
I second, I thought it was the evening.
We saw it in the wall, but it was...
They don't return until ten-thirty PM.
Do you have to vote for it now, or is it?
Too late, David.
That was rather...
Any further discussion?
That's a bold move on your board.
Hearing none, all in favor of approving the trip, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
David, I'm so surprised.
I, I do have one comment, actually. Um, I wanted to share with you that, uh, I thank the, um, student council for the nine-eleven service that they did at the high school. It was truly moving, and about twenty minutes at seven o'clock in the morning, and, um, they did just an outstanding job. I think we should give it a proud, a couple of years. That's it.
Can we, can we send a letter from the board to the high school, to the men and the students? Men and them?
That would be nice.
Moving on, curriculum program.
Uh, no report, first report.
Committee?
Yes, uh, we had a meeting on September the third, I, I believe. Yeah, uh, September third, and, uh, we continue, uh, to discuss, uh, Matt, the Matt, the upcoming match pilot, and what I would say to all of you, if you get a chance to come to these meetings, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Davies, and I, I can't fix these, um, these meetings, and mostly due to your work, our, uh, our truly reflective, um, very important work of the district. Thank you very much. We also had, uh, we also had an open discussion about, uh, if you remember, the gentleman was at the board about bringing the Nor, uh, the role of the Norseman into, uh, into our curriculum, and we've sort of taken that, and we're looking at some place that we may be able to put that, but obviously the curriculum's pretty tight, tight, and the new standards is...
And they've talked to the social studies department head, man that worked in the community, so he said that we need to make a quick look at it, and he worked with us.
But I just think it was a, it's great that people in the community are that interested in what we're doing. And, uh, so, my, I should also announce that, uh, Jack Linton, who had been a, uh, who had been a, uh, citizen member of the, uh, of the curriculum committee, has ended his redetainment. And we will miss Jack.
Next meeting?
Next meeting. I don't know, it's based on...
Miss, there is a technology committee in...
October first.
October first is the next curriculum committee. ACIU is, uh, reeling under its money problems, and really, we didn't discuss a lot, other than money. Athletic committee?
Uh, we will be having an athletic committee meeting on October eighth at five o'clock, so we will be done by six-thirty, because that's a Tuesday night, so we, we will be having a meeting here, again at five PM. Uh, just to give you some updates, the fall sports season has started, um, boy soccer is five and two, they play Wilson tonight, so hopefully they're now six and two, unless you're, the game's over. Uh, the girls volleyball team is undefeated, they have a pretty good chance of, uh, doing very, very well again. Um, a girl tennis team is, we beat Wilson for the first time since two thousand and seven, uh, very, very happy about that, and, um, we may have a sister team playing in the finals in the, in the, in the counties this year. The, um, Ally and Sandy Snyder are both undefeated at one and two singles, but they're both gonna play number one, so they might be wrestling on the tennis court, uh, at a family. So that would be great for us to have.
What year's, what year are they?
Uh, I believe it's sophomore and freshman.
Ten, ten-nine.
They're, they're very young, and I know, um, Ally plays, pretty, she plays basketball as well. Um, football team's three and out, big game Friday night against Conrad Weiser at home, so if you're available, come on out. Uh, Mr. Legav thinks that there could be up to eight thousand people there.
Wow, are they three and O also?
Yes, they are, and they're very good.
So are we?
Yeah, hey, I, I hope, I don't want to have any more Yopin kids to play quarterback, we need, if there's more, let's bring a lot.
We have a little one, yeah.
There you go, let's keep bringing one.
We'll go into it.
And, uh, and that is it. So again, the, the season's gone off, the, just noted, again, some of the, some of the teams, even if we're not winning, everything's good, I haven't heard any basketball, so that's always, that's important as well. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Township liaison. Um, we have been coordinating with the township on selecting someone to do their strategic study. Uh, we narrowed it down to two, two different organizations, I believe the township is gonna make the decision on, uh, who's going to do that study or help them in their strategic plan, and it's only appropriate because they're paying for it anyway, so... Uh, public relations, Mr., Mr. Bremer.
Thank you, I'd just like to remind you and announce to everyone that next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, uh, at seven o'clock in this room is the first parent forum for the year. Featured topic for the night is, uh, the Common Core. Julie Klein, our reading supervisor, is going to provide some information on, uh, what the state is doing and what we are doing here in the district. And so that's next Tuesday at seven o'clock here in this room for that parent forum.
Can we, can we get that recorded?
Video recorded?
Yeah.
I wouldn't know why not.
I know, it might be, we might have to cost a lot of, because people can't make it on Tuesday night, myself included, this is, you know, it's free, you know, four hundred. But, um...
I'll check, we'll get the camera.
BCTC, Mr. Teeser.
Well, things are all well at BCTC. Actually, they really are. Um, I think, I think I told you folks about the CDL school that we've opened, uh, we actually have the first day class and the first night class, full, uh, twenty-five and twenty students respectively, uh, the tuition's five thousand dollars each. Uh, it, from a business sta, from a business standpoint, I think it's gonna be really good for the school, and secondly, I really believe that it provides a service that the county needs, since it is the only CDL school within Berks County. So it's, uh, that, that aspect has gone well, we've gotten all the zoning things and school's up and running, and the Diesel's are standing.
I understand that they have started an, or a dual enrollment course, college algebra.
Yes.
That's something new, I just got, uh, information about that.
Yeah, we've been, uh, we've been working on a dual enrollment agreement, I, I will obviously look at that now with a different perspective than the conversation we had this evening.
Thank you, sir. Facilities, Mr. Brady.
If it works for the schedule of our group, I'd like to have the meeting of the facilities committee on October second, six PM, does that work for us?
I believe so.
Yeah, I would like to have a meeting in Awatton Creek, you know, involve an external tour, and then we'll do an internal tour. We'll be hiking, bring boots.
The lights be on?
That's why we're going early, it's not gonna be done in the daylight savings time.
What time is it?
We're starting at six PM, we'll meet outside in the parking lot, we're going to look at the beach wall fields and see the conditions there, we're going to walk down the wetlands, see that, we're going to see the nature trail that we connect to the side road with, and we're going to look at the areas that have not been finished by a contractor today.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stowe?
Yeah.
Go to the balance, uh... Ms. Pizer, name of the course.
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, ask for approval of paying the bills. Uh, we had, um, two million, three hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and three cents out of the general fund, and three thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-nine cents out of the Awatton Creek elementary school project fund. So, I, uh, move that we pay these bills.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
Just one comment, just like to note that all these bills we're paying over one hundred twelve thousand, one hundred and two dollars is going to the charter schools.
Further discussion? All in favor of, uh, the payment request, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Martin?
I took, uh, a few minutes and put together, excuse me, I took a few, I spent a few minutes just putting together some potential board goals for this year, which really are two, two different from the ones we had from last year, just to give, you know, some food for thought, as a starting point. Actually, a lot of these points were covered by Dr. Trumura last week in his, uh, in his interview, when he was asked about goals he were to have for the board, and, uh, I think that, uh, a lot of those were, were some of the same things that I was thinking of. Obviously, we're in bargaining with just about every employee in the district, so that remains, uh, a large priority. And obviously, the budget is still an issue, so, um, you know, if we can, if we can develop a budget with the parameters I have listed, it may not even be possible, but it's something that I would want to shoot for anyway, uh, in the way I worded it, it would, uh, be negative, uh, minimal negative impact to students, programs, staff, and the public, and to maintain the financial health of the school district. If we could accomplish all that, probably all magicians, but, uh, I think that's the goal to shoot for. And then obviously, we have, uh, you know, the study of the merger, potential merger between Exeter and Antietam, and having to, uh, study the, uh, the data around, uh, whether that would be a decision or not, and make a decision whether to undertake that venture or not. And, um, after that decision is made, then we can, I think, better determine whether to go forward or not with some, uh, modifications to the bus facility, uh, or to defer that, or to, you know, do some updates, or to actually embark on a new one, if that would be necessary. So, um, those are just some ideas, you may want to change some of them, you may want to add to those, but, um, I think those cover some really important things that the board will need to be addressing this year.
Any thoughts on that?
Um, I think too, that we ought to, um, one of my goals is to try to, as Mr. Brady just pointed out, the proliferation of charter schools, and maybe we might try to set some type of goal to try to, I know we're working on, we work on trying to get, um, to have a cyber school of our own and, and things of that nature, you know, to bring students back, at least so that we had some understanding of what they were being taught. But I, I think we need to stop the bleeding and, and people are, come up with something, we, our students in our school, because I think that is the place for them in many respects, especially in the early grades, where the formation of the habits of, of education, you know, are, are, are strong. So I would hope that we could maybe make that more of a...
Pat, do you think we should, perhaps, we, we started the cyber school last year as an attempt to keep some of those students in our goal, don't you think we should let that time, let that have time to settle in and see what type of, uh, reaction we have?
Well, just as, uh, you know, as an update to that, we have, at the last time I looked, which was last, end of last week, we have, I don't know if it's fourteen or fifteen students who are now enrolled, who would be enrolled in other cyber charter schools, but are now enrolled in the Exeter Virtual Academy. So that alone is, is, would represent a significant savings, and when we first started on this, uh, the folks from Chester County IU said to me, don't expect to get more than six students, uh, in the first year, it'll build slowly, and then it'll, and once it takes hold. But we've done a lot better than that, I think we've had, you know, very good initial success. Now we'll see how it goes, you know, in the next year. Um, and we've also, over the summer, we did get back several cyber charter students into our brick and mortar schools. So, um, that's also pretty significant. They abandoned the idea of cyber charters and found that, you know, it's really better to go back to the district, and it isn't as easy and as much fun as they thought it was going to be, um, you know, they look at it as a way to sleep, lady, get out of doing so much work, et cetera. And, um, you know, I think that, uh, you know, they find out quickly that it's not that easy, and it is a lot of work, and, you know, if you don't put the work into it, you're not gonna get the credit, it's not like a, a given. So they end up back with us, unfortunately, then they're behind in their studies, and, you know, we have to work hard on that. But, um, yeah, I think we're making some progress, and, you know, I don't think it's going to go away overnight, but our, um, our numbers are lower than they had been in terms of other cyber charters that cost us the full bill of, you know, like ten thousand dollars or more.
I mean, I do, I do think that we are, you know, working on it, and, but I would like, I, you know, I think that should be a stated goal, because I think the administration's trying to do... trying to do a job to bring these kids back, and I think, I think maybe awesome, as a board talking about it, as, as, you know, woken some of the people to the, you know, to the pitfalls of charter schools, and that's, that's all I'm concerned about, because I do feel as if we've got a great program for our kids, we have great teachers, and, you know, I understand some of the problems of getting up late, getting up early, or, you know, not wanting, or wanting to have a job, but I think, you know, that we keep on emphasizing that, you know, we could, we could have kids staying here, which would be a great benefit to them and to the community.
Well, we discuss this at the workshop meeting, and then we'll go for adoption of goals at the meeting.
Yeah, question, sir. And I, I don't know if anyone will remember this, but I certainly didn't remember it. In a conversation this weekend with the former Secretary of Energy for Pennsylvania, who is now a gubernatorial candidate, one of the things that he brought up, which I could not answer was, he said at one point in the state budget, there was a line item for reimbursement for charter school fees too, and it was a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars, and it was a very quiet cut, that a hundred and twenty-nine million became zero.
Yes.
I, I did not remember that, and yet I think what it points up obviously is, we need to stop the bleeding because they just keep taking money away from us.
We also have pending legislation on changing that also.
Well, hopefully, you know, we'll see what that does.
There's been pending legislation, though, I just have no faith in it.
Optimism, optimism, Dr.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do you have an idea how many students we currently have enrolled in the cyber school now?
Um, it's a moving target, and it's hard, this time of year, it's really hard to determine because they're, they still have kids enrolling and still have kids coming in and leaving. I, I think it was in the eighties when school first started, but I don't know what it might be right now, and I think the list includes kids that are in our cyber charter. So what I want to do is make sure we factor out those kids, and, you know, because I consider that a win. Some people are just bound to determine that they need the flexibility of a virtual academy type of experience, and you can't talk them out of that. So, in those cases, when you can talk them out of that, we at least want to be able to control costs, control the quality of the curriculum, et cetera, and this gives us an opportunity to do that. So I consider it a win if we can get them in our virtual academy, even though our first preference would be to get them back or keep them in our schools.
So are we still getting the support from Brandywine Virtual?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Were they surprised?
Were they, uh, you know what, I haven't talked to them lately, but I would imagine that they're surprised at the, at the numbers that we have, yeah.
I know, because I remember them saying, you know, that's quite a big percentage.
Yeah, I was very surprised.
Anything else to say?
No, that's it. So we'll bring this back next month, the workshop.
Dr. Freeze.
Uh, thank you.
Talking about...
We've been talking about...
Yeah, that's nice.
Dr. Freeze.
Good evening. I report that that is a very quiet start for your Reifton. We have almost six hundred and thirty-two students. We ended last year around six hundred and forty-three, six hundred and forty-four. So we actually have one room open at this point. We have thirteen sections of sixth grade, and we have twelve sections of fifth grade at this point. So as I said, it's, it's been a good start. In terms of student achievement, I'm just going to hit some of the highlights here. We're continuing this year with push-ins. Last year, we had our learning support teachers and our reading teachers going into classrooms and supporting students, which was absolutely terrific. This year, we're also going to have both our gift teachers doing it as well. It really has helped with providing instruction to those students, and it's been good, you know, in terms of making contact with those students. We've worked very hard with balanced literacy. Last year, and we'll continue to do that again this year, we are getting guided reading as one of our main, one of our main targets, and we're certainly concentrating on struggling with readers, and also muscle on building a reading staff, which is very important. In terms of math, our teachers are participating in the math pilot, and they've been working on math practices. Last year, for the first time, we had fifth grade teachers that were on the math problem solving skills in our classes, and we're continuing that. That's been terrific. Last year, we also did something to our math classes. We combined the high average and the low average. In the past, we always had high math, high average, low average, and low math, and this year, last year, we did blended average in fifth grade, which was successful, and we're trying that again this year, and we're also doing this year, doing it in sixth grade. So we're looking forward to the results from that. That was terrific last year. I'm looking forward to another good year with that. Learning support teachers continue to do Read One Eighty and System Forty-Four in classrooms. Last year, that was extremely successful. Over the summer, I had a chance to look at some of those results, and we had students that went up two grade levels in reading over the course of the school year, which has been absolutely terrific. Years ago, when I went to see that in Bethlehem, I saw the Read One Eighty teacher appear again, students that were going up as many as three. So I'm looking forward to seeing some of the results. Last year was the first time that we had fifth and sixth grade teachers working together, so hopefully we'll continue to see good things there. We're excited to be using the new teacher effective model for observations. We will start our observations in October. We're continuing our walkthroughs in classrooms. We've been trying very hard to get into classrooms. We're being known as for teachers, going to see positive things, and working discussions with them. In terms of programs and initiatives, we're going to be starting our learning-focused collaborative meetings, which will take place this year on our early dismissals, and we are having teachers that are actually working together and dialoguing about things in our curriculum. I've got some sheets back from some of the teachers on what they're working on. Just over the weekend, I was looking at them. We do have many teachers that are working on employing more reading and writing strategies in their classrooms. In fact, most of fifth and sixth grade will be doing that this year, and they'll be doing it in science, social studies curriculums as well, which should be terrific. I do have my specialists. We're going to be working on character building, a character building campaign in the building for sixth grade, and that's in high to the district strategic plan for positive school climbing, so we're looking forward to that. Response to intervention, we're changing some things up a little bit this year. Our, all of our communication arts teachers will be working with their home rooms with the first tier of students and as well as the second tier of students. Those students that need extra reading practice are going to be working with our reading specialists. Our Arts and Residents Program, this year, we're going to have a play, and our students are going to be putting on for the first time in eleven years. We're going to do an actual, an actual play that sixth grade students will be putting on for the rest of the staff. Our Arts and Residents Committee is trying to be helping into pulling all of the cafeteria tables out of the cafeteria, and have all the sixth grade kids sit on the floor to watch the play together, which is something that the board orders.
What play is that?
They are creating their own play.
Oh, okay.
It's a woman by the name of Elena Rader, who's a Holy, Holy graduate, who also graduated from Kent State, and she's going to be working on a play based on Wizard Oz and Peter Pan. So we're, we're looking forward to that. Before I get off of programs and initiatives, I will say that there's a lot that's going on at Reifton with changes to the Communication Arts, Math Pilot, the different, differentiated supervision and some of those things. And honestly, I told this to my personal advisory committee today, I couldn't be more proud of all of the hard work that's, that's been done by our teachers at Reifton. They're working very, very hard to make these changes. We've got people that are planning together during their planning periods, people that are planning together on weekends, in the morning before school and after school in their own time, and it's absolutely terrific. I don't think I've ever seen people work as hard as they are. It really is paying off. Our students are very lucky to have our teachers. They're doing very nice stuff. School climate and culture, we continue to have our Wellness Committee that works very hard to provide good things for our students and our teachers. We do continue to have team meetings. Mrs. Stoll and I, she's right here in the front row, we've been working really hard to get into classrooms, talk to teachers, you know, working on building a positive climate. As I said, everybody is working hard, and it's, it's a growing effort, it really is. Thanks to look forward to our recent activities and upcoming events. We did have our fifth grade orientation. I did two of those this year. That's why I was late till the last quarter, and I apologize, but it was well attended. We think we had somewhere between seven hundred, eight hundred people there, which was great. We did one in the morning and one in the afternoon. Breaking Mowery Night was also extremely well attended, and our holiday concerts are December tenth and seventeenth, and I should also mention that Dave Monster Mash Bashers is coming up in October. That will also be well attended.
I just have a question about the reading. When you say that the students are reading, some of the students are reading two grades ahead of where they are?
Two grade levels.
Grade levels, thank you.
They're improving that much by the end.
Does that include comprehension then?
Mm-hmm.
And are they reading across different subjects?
If peer instruction program can, if it basically deals with program, sometimes they will look at all of them.
The books included in the programs offer a lot of nonfiction, so this reading is only taking place in their Communication Arts class, but the topics are covering a wide variety of content.
Thank you.
You said you had a lot of success with the blended math in the fifth grade. What would be your criteria for determining success?
Look at PSSA scores, and they, we did see improvements in fifth grade, especially with our, our low act. We used to have just low average, and we have a high average and a low average. Now, they have, they're in there with students that are maybe at a higher level, they can work together, there's a lot of discussion, and it, it gives them some to work, work toward.
Now that we're going towards our second year with pre-algebra, do you think we're going to have more growth in that area?
That, I, I was wondering if that question would come up.
It's always going to come from math, I'll tell you.
And we tried pre-algebra, and we stopped it for now, but last year was, was the first known year at this point, because we knew we were going to the Common Core, and we knew we were going to be having some changes in math, and we wanted to take a look at where we are at this point.
What do we do for the students that are selling mathematics, that are ready for something of that nature?
Um, we can differentiate in classroom.
Yeah, try to figure out how...
And I think what, you know, what we're, our thought process was that with the, I'm going to, I'm going to start calling it what the state wants to call it now, the P.A. Core Standards, is really pushing down that pre-algebra to sixth grade, so it will, it will be in sixth grade curriculum, you know, beginning, beginning this year and continuing on. And if we adopt a new program, the sixth grade curriculum will really reflect a lot of those pre-algebra concepts that you were teaching to just that selected group of students.
Which will then still allow our students in seventh grade to have that ability to then move towards algebra one?
Well, I don't know.
Or they still be in a pre-algebra type of room.
I, I can't answer that question at this point in time. I don't know, Todd, if you want to weigh in on that. I think we have to, I don't confirm in limbo, I think...
I'm just, I use a lack of another term.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need to wait to see how the pilot goes. I know that some of the course names may change, and just because pre-algebra is very finite, and you're talking about the concepts that are being covered, and the Core Standards from Pennsylvania, they cover much more than just algebraic concepts, so I would need to be looking at a seventh grade accelerated program for those students who demonstrate proficiency for, and above in the concepts that are being tested, and that would be more of a blended eighth grade, seventh grade curriculum, because much of the eighth grade in the Core Standards is very similar to our current algebra program, which is, it just, it's all ramped up when we get through the middle school, and that's why it's so important that we find a very good program, especially in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade bracket, that will really prepare our students very well for the rigor of the high school, especially that key student exam in algebra one. So, that's our goal, and there's been some changes, and I, the journey's going to be, you know, the whole year really, and we'll keep you posted on how we're doing with all that, but there's going to be some, lots of questions, and hopefully during these curriculum meetings, we'll be able to answer a summit, not all of them, as we're going through.
Thanks.
Dr. Freeze, I can attest that Reifton is an exciting place. I realize that students are coming from different buildings, assimilating themselves into, into Reifton in the fifth grade, and now they're continuing on into the sixth. And you've also highlighted in your report, a lot of programs and initiatives and objectives. I know your staff is, is, is working very, very hard. However, as a leader, you sometimes have to prioritize. What are some of the maybe two or three top priorities that you have for Reifton throughout the year?
It's a good question. With the changes in Language Arts, certainly that would be, that's one of our top things, making sure that teachers have time, plan, and they can work together in collaborative meetings, and to, to make sure that they put these changes in place, and they have a chance to discuss with each other the strengths of our program and the positive things that they're seeing in the classroom, so they can, they can share and collaborate together, so I think that's one of them. And the second one is certainly our, our math pilot, and making sure that we can get the word out in a positive way, and people understand what's going on, so that we're ready for, ready for the changes for the following year. But, you know, as I said, you know, none of that can be done unless it's a team effort, and realizing that we, we have some big goals, we're going to actually do it together, and it's, it's something I, I'm looking to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Freeze?
Just a minute.
Go ahead.
Dr. Freeze, you talked about this reading program that, that you had initiated last year, or that whatever it was, and that you saw some, like, some kids starting at the beginning of the year, and at the end, they were like two grade levels ahead. Was that on both ends of the spectrum or all over, or was it more the, the kids that were on, on grade level are now, you know, maybe two or above, or...
This was primarily a learning support classroom.
Oh, learning support.
We had got it in sixth, but this was the first time that we had students that did Read One Eighty, had started in fifth, and then also went to sixth. They, they do Read One Eighty in System Forty-Four at junior high, but it's the first time that we had two grade levels both through. And to be honest with you, I think it surprised all of us. You know, I mean, it was, we were looking for good things, but to see those kind of results, to be able to go into classroom, the learning support students, and they have cycles that they have to go through, and they're, they're in stations for about twenty minutes. And when the bell rings, they get done one station and going to the next one. And when you see at the end of twenty minutes, students that are upset because they have to put their book down and go to the next thing, it's terrific. We've got students who are, who are reading, and in learning support rooms, you see them walking around with books now. You see them going to our morning reading club in the morning, and they're reading books. It, it's a terrific thing, and, you know, I've certainly, I applaud the board for approving that program. It is a, it's a expensive program, but it, it works. It worked very good.
I know Mr. Flamm has seen some really good results in seventh and eighth grade as well.
In regards to being both ends of the spectrum, it's a, it's a remediation program, so it's not a...
So it's not available. It's a, it's a high interest, high structured program for struggling readers.
I didn't realize that that's what it was. I thought it was.
They, they have gotten, they've gotten outstanding results nationally with that program. The program is going extremely well. We'll expect a essential question in the next.
Do you still, how many kids are coming to your morning reading club now? Is it still so well attended?
Yes. I think we're at maybe 100, 150. This morning, I admit I didn't get down, but this morning we had Tim DeWalt reading to the kids for Constitution Day, which was terrific. We'll have Lloyd Noddy will do Halloween, come up. We always have Paul Mafracken, he does some things. He does St. Patrick's Day. And certainly, all of you, certainly anybody who'd like to have a morning reading club should read, that would be great.
At what time this morning, reading club?
It's about eight o'clock in the morning to eight seventeen. Students come in and I will tell you, when there is a guest reader, it's a packed house and we have to interview him for two bucks. We're not bringing barcloths, but it's pretty close.
There's no pressure, but some people get dressed up in costumes. So if you want to come read, you can just grab your book and sit there and read.
Any other questions for Dr. Fries?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Two items of business to actually. We have received the resignation of another board member, Mr. Yager, due to professional and family commitments, has resigned from the board. Would like a, if anyone would ring for a motion to accept that resignation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in the second discussion.
And I go, we discuss the replacements now or you discuss that?
That'll be next.
Okay.
No further discussion. All in favor of accepting of Mr. Yager's resignation from the board, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Replacements.
During our past interview cycle, when Dr. Tamar was interviewed, there was another gentleman who was very highly recommended. Came upon this as a great choice and was basically in second place. I would recommend that gentleman be placed as a replacement for Mr. Yager.
I, I would, I would agree.
I was to take the mystery out of it. Shall we say Mr. Zepina?
I didn't know how to pronounce his name.
Have we contacted?
We got a motion second, have we contacted? Yes, we did.
Oh, good.
He was a little inscribable to that, understanding that we have to take action. Right decision. Sorry for the discussion on this.
Would you like to describe the process now that we have to go through, which I think your statement would be a good one.
Since we are now within six days of the election, which we are not in the last circumstances, Mr. Zepina would be, if he is, whoever is appointed to this position will serve out until the next municipal election, which is two years from now. In this case, we can no longer get a, because of the timing of the last vacancy, we will have to run on the ballot to fill Mr. Tamar's seat. So we'll have one on the ballot and one appointed.
And then that person would, would be in for two years, two, I guess, almost two and a half or something, right?
Two years.
Yeah, two years. Two years and some hours too. Okay, great.
Any further discussion?
We have a motion, all in favor of appointing Michael Zepina as the replacement for Mr. Yager, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, I will contact Mr. Yager. Now, for the gallery, this next piece of business is voting for the Pennsylvania School Board Association offices. I would not be hurt if one of the lead, because this is strictly one school district voted out five other school districts. But anyway, if you'd like to leave, please do so without feeling a least bit bad. Due to the change in the bylaws last year at the Pennsylvania School Board Association, we used to vote for these folks when we attended the leadership convention in the next month or so. I don't know any of these people. If there is anyone here who can make any recommendations or shed some light on this course.
The delegate in large is a branding position. I have not known either of those people, but for the other positions, my, my personal recommendation, please do not feel obligated, but I have worked with these people on a number of committees, some of them for three and four years. And my recommendation for president-elect would be Mark Miller.
Vice President.
And for PSBA vice president would be Chuck Ballard. And for treasurer would be Otto Boy. These people have been around the organization, they've worked in many different positions in the organization. You guys have a chance to read some of what they've done. I know that Chuck and Mark are master school board members and so, you know, they, they know the way around. I think they, they would be good for this department.
Pat, you seem to be familiar with some of them. Do you have any?
Well, I do know Otto Boy. I worked with his father, Otto Boy Senior at the, at the random, at random school district for many years. Mr. Boy is an honorable man and I'm sure his son is very honorable. As I read Charles Ballard's file there, anyone that knows Diane Ravage and, and supports her has to be a candidate, because Diane Ravage is, is the only thing, you know, supporting against the big money people that are all for charter schools, the private nation or public schools. And when I looked at this, Mr., because the first one, the second one, he too, you know, we need to stand up for public education. You know, you hear these talk show hosts talking about government schools, but these are not government schools. These are, these are the public schools. These are the, the people's schools, the people in our community. And as someone that has that idea, and we need to stand up for public education, I think someone that has that idea, someone that I can support.
First of, I don't know either of these gentlemen, Mr. Miller or Mr. LaCoppa, first sheet. First thing I will note is, he's a wildcat. Therefore, since he's a cat, that's not a bad thing, since I'm also a cat. The second thing I will note is the fact that he has been on the Federal Relations Network for the PSBA, so obviously he's not doing too bad. And he was the endorsed candidate. So I don't know what that means.
We've all been on the Federal Relations Network.
So what is the Leadership Development Committee and their endorsements? Someone tell me why they endorsed him.
Oh, we only have it around.
But apparently, no, I haven't been around long enough to figure out.
It's a serious issue. Really, we live about this. It works just like inside a garden.
So if he's up for the chair, when he's been on a basis, so therefore that's good?
No, no. I'm just saying, process itself.
So basically, you have the old voice system?
Pretty much. If you want the committee's recommendation, I think that.
Okay, the second question I have though, the real question I have is, I'm noticing on the back, Marv Urie thinks she's unopposed, but you have her picking one of two individuals. So can someone explain to me whether it's like picking two or Marv is kind of?
No, what I'm, what I'm not.
There's, there's a person for east and a person for west. I'm not sure about whether Marv is.
Well, she's going to go for a poll.
Okay, sorry.
Oh.
I know one of the reasons, it was kind of a.
You have to vote.
I wasn't here last.
Yeah, you have to vote.
I wasn't with you last week.
As a civil majority on each one. If you decide you don't want to vote on them or any particular one, you don't have to vote.
It wasn't.
State.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, or other input on this?
Well, why are you opposed to Mr. LaCopp? You apparently think that Mr. Miller is better than Mr. LaCopp. Why don't you like Mr. LaCopp? What do you know about Mr. LaCopp? Do you think he's big business?
I'm, I'm, no, I'm, I'm, I took their, their vote through your statements.
No, I was just wondering, because you were all about Mr. Miller, because he was so gung ho of public education, but I thought, Mr. LaCopp must be gung ho of public education or wouldn't he be nominated? Or why?
Well, you know, I think he just conceded, didn't he?
Well, I think it's a little more than that.
Isn't that how it works?
Yeah, but somehow he got the endorsement and Miller did it.
Who are you giving the endorsement from?
All right.
Read the bottom, the subtitles.
I don't think this is particularly probable.
Are we voting individually or as?
I think that's our voting idea.
Individually?
Yeah, I think so. But you know what? I only offer my recommendation. I only offer my opinion because I'm a sage. I certainly was not trying to sway anyone. If you have an opinion of your own, it's certainly your business. I will not tell him who's asleep tonight, the people that I recommend.
Russ, you know, but I don't.
I wouldn't tell anybody that they're approved. If anybody can tell those out, deserves to get something.
If each of you will take a piece of paper and write your four nominations, your four selections for your president, vice president. Give us this vote. All right, have I, instead of written, can we just, just by shorthand?
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah, yeah. All right, anyone in favor of Mr. LaCopp for president, please raise your hand. One, Mr. Miller.
Opinion of one. Where you go, Jim?
Well, he's a wildcat.
He's a wildcat.
He's a wildcat.
For vice president.
I think you're just a hawk.
For vice president, Mr. Breach. Mr. Ballard. For treasurer, there is only one nominee.
No, there's two.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Lasbruck. Mr. Boy. Do you have those?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Are there any other matters to come?
Yeah, the legislative, yeah, the legislative person at large.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Mark.
All right, legislative at large representative, Mr. Furry or Mara Furry. Four.
Oh, no, here, um.
Five. All right. There, that's the majority. Are there any other matters to come before the board? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.